At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for August 10. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The stands one under God, indivisible, and under God.
Liberty and justice for all.
I feel like we're missing some bodies here. Anyone heard from Councilmember Kibble this evening? Okay, take that as a negative. Hopefully, he will be joining us shortly here. Lisa let the roll call show that Councilmember Kibble is late this evening. I did not hear from him, so I expect him to be here shortly. And that will move on to the approval of the minutes July 27, 2020. Councilmember Kennedy?
I move the minutes for July 27, 2020.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton, to move the minutes from July 27, 2020. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Move on to the approval of the bills this evening. Councilmember Kennedy?
Make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, we are going to, we're on the approval of the agenda. We are going to need to amend this to add some old business. Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to add to the agenda for tonight under old business. The request for approval regarding the resolution approving proposed charter amendment ballot proposition to the county clerk.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurzweil, supported by Councilmember Walton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. City Clerk Deaton, could you please let it be known that Councilmember Kibble was able to join us here? Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda has the resignation of Josie Kearns from the Cultural Arts Commission, also the resignation of Joe Madzak from the Cultural Arts Commission, and a Cultural Arts Commission appointee in Dana Johnston.
I'm going to support the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and please try to keep it within the two-minute time limit. I will have a timer going over here. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening, Lisa?
Not at this time.
Okay. At this time, we will close the floor for public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with Nate.
All right. Good evening, everyone. The shop local dine local street pullpanners banners have gone up in downtown as part of the marketing campaign the task force has been working on. As a part of that campaign last week, I called in Ms. Diggs to place the shop local dine local feather flags throughout the city. If you go throughout the township, you'll be able to see some of those that are already up. Unfortunately, there are some delays in getting the sites located, so we're hoping to get at least three of the flags installed on Wednesday if the weather allows us to. Another thing on the task force, I've been asked along with Andrea Meyer and Tina Archer to present to the membership of the Michigan Downtown Association on August 18 regarding our campaign and how we came together to do that. Outside of the task force, I've been working on some out-of-the-box ideas to help promote South Line businesses specifically. And I've been looking into placing some advertisements on apps like Instagram or YouTube. I was reading some Mackenzie and Company reports, and they noted that 34% of people that use Instagram actually purchase something from the recommendation of an influencer. So I know that some of our downtown businesses have over 1,000 followers on Instagram, and I think if we can strategically place some ads utilizing zip codes or targeting different demographics that we may be able to get more people to either shop online or go to people's stores. For the patronicity campaign, we're still waiting on the funds from Oakland County, so once we receive those, I'll be going out and giving checks to businesses. And then, at the end of, not last week, but the prior week, I provided five letters of recommendations to businesses seeking COVID-19 grant funding from the Heartbeat of Main Street program, which was provided through Main Street America. And finally, the banner polls again coming up, but they're almost complete. We have to order a key pole, which is something that goes into the ground to provide stability for the pole that's outside of Leo Foley's law office. Once that comes in, which will probably be next week, we'll get that installed, and you'll be able to see that if you have driven by there, that the the big concrete block has been removed. So thanks to DPW for taking care of that for us, and that's all I have for downtown.
Thank you, Nate. Councilmember Kibble, you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just kind of curious. Do you have, Nate, do you have a banner in mind that isn't actually associated with a specific event? Just as something to adorn the corridor coming in?
Yeah, so we've talked about placing a banner that says shop local and dine local, kind of consistent branding with what we've been working on with the task force. And maybe getting one of those up there to encourage people.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Nate, do you think that you could maybe share the art with the rest of the council so that they can see some of those signs?
Yeah, I can do that.
And the, and the signs that we are going to be hopefully having businesses take pictures with their customers and the stickers that we're hoping they use and all that.
Yeah, I can do that.
Maybe we can share that with everybody on council, they can see all the stuff that we're looking at.
Yep, sounds good.
Anyone else have anything for Nate this evening? All right. Thank you very much for that update, Nate.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the fire chief report, and Chief Vogel.
Good evening. Chief Weir is officially back to full duty today. That was good news for the department. As for the ladder truck, I am still waiting for the official report from Doug Beers about what we need. We do know it has a hydraulic leak. We do know that it failed the UL inspection last week. I was hoping to have more today, but I do not. I know we're waiting for some parts. We did pass our EMS inspection from Laura. I was very happy. It was very quick and very easy. The inspector said that we're one of the best to do, so I was happy about that. And then finally, we did receive official word that we have received a grant for a training building. I've been working with Joe Barney at wastewater treatment plant to try to pick a location where we're going to put it. The grant's for about $5,000, and it's completely free money. We just will have to spend a little bit for some ground prep, which I have in my training budget. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Does anyone have anything for Chief Vogel this evening? All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
On to the police chief report, and Chief Sobek. Oh, Chief, you're muted, bud.
How's that?
There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This afternoon downtown, we had a voices over choices. I wouldn't call it a protest. I would just call it an event. We had about 80 people that just basically surrounded the four corners of Pontiac Trail in 10 mile today. About an hour long, people were just kind of expressing their First Amendment right and to, I guess, express their displeasure over the school board's meeting to have all online classes for the first six weeks and seeing how it goes. So we had no issues other than the heat. It was pretty pasty today. Channels two, four, and seven were there on scene interviewing people, but hour-long, no issues. Everything went fine. Second thing is, I hope to bring you a solution to our phone problems in next council meeting. Brienne's been working diligently. She's grabbing contracts from Comcast and Challenger Technologies. I think currently they were with our city manager Lisa, actually our city attorney Lisa. She is hopefully reviewing those contracts and maybe we'll go back and forth to try and get it right, so just to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row before we come to you with a final solution to our, our phone issues that we've been having. I finally received a, two checks from MMRMA for the grants that we applied for last couple of months ago. So we received a check for $6,000 for the in-car camera project, and then an additional $5,700 for the data storage project. I originally thought the, the data storage is going to be a total of 11,400, but there was some fine tuning in there, fine printing, basically saying up to 50%. So we have received those checks in a total of $11,700 for our two grants. They have been turned over to Patricia. And then finally, one more thing is just to shout out to my right-hand man Lieutenant Doug Baki. Very aware of the heavy workload that he carries and the responsibility that the lieutenant position carries within our department. I feel very comfortable leaving him in charge when I'm not there. He's been doing a great job, and I just wanted to publicly thank him and recognize him before you guys for his efforts. So that is all I have for this evening.
Great, thanks, Chief. Does anyone have anything for Chief this evening? Really quickly, Chief, I just wanted to thank you for your continued impressive way of communicating with folks when we have not protests, but activities in the community. And so thank you and making sure that we're all on top of that and working with everyone on that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. With that, we will move on to old business number one this evening. Request for approval to submit resolution approving proposed charter amendment ballot proposition to the county clerk. City Attorney Lisa, if you would like to take the lead on that?
Sure. Council, you might remember at the last meeting, you authorized us to prepare language and submit it for a charter amendment regarding the quorum at this time only. We did that. We prepared the language. You passed the resolution at the last meeting. We then sent that resolution as is required to both the Attorney General's Office and the Governor for approval before it's placed on a ballot. The Attorney General's Office did provide formal approval, which is in your packet. We still have not heard from the Governor yet. I contacted the Governor's Office and spoke to the legal counsel for the Governor, the deputy legal counselor, and she indicated to me that she has a meeting with the Governor on Wednesday, and that's when they plan to sign all of the charter amendments that are pending. You can still go forward and have this placed on the ballot by submitting the resolution to the county clerk no later than tomorrow. After speaking with the deputy legal counsel as well as the Assistant Attorney General I've been dealing with, it almost never happens. Neither of them can recall an instance where both of them recommended approval and the Governor rejected the language. So chances of it being rejected are so slim that I am going to go ahead and recommend that we do place that on the agenda, knowing that there's a very, 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 very slight risk the Governor doesn't approve the language. That's what's before you.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead, and then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Kurzweil.
I just wondered, thank you. I just wondered if, what would happen if we submitted it and then the Governor rejected it, just so I...
It would be, well, so, so let me explain this. Both the Governor's Office and the Attorney General's Office were absolutely shocked when I told them that the county has told us that the 11th is the drop dead date, because they have told me that they know the county has accepted allowed withdrawal, allowed amendments to ballot language that's submitted. And they've also told me that there are numerous Oakland County communities hoping to get something on the ballot, and they're nowhere as far as we are in the process. That said, you can still pass the language without the Governor's approval.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kurzweil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize submission of the resolution approving proposed charter amendment ballot proposition to the county clerk on August 11, 2020.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Kurzweil, supported by Councilmember Dill. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that this is such benign housekeeping language that nobody's going to be offended by us making a shot at this, so that, it's not an issue.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yeah.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. With that, we'll move on to new business this evening. New business one, agreement for 390 South Lafayette Street preliminary geotechnical investigation soil borings with G consulting group of Troy, Michigan.
Yeah, so the city of South Line has identified the parcel located at 390 South Lafayette Street as a site for potential development in the master plan. Part of the development process is determining the suitability of the soil to determine whether it can handle the weight of a building, basically. And so what the soil borings do is they determine what is present in the soil. What G2 is going to do, they'll be drilling two holes that go 60 feet down and then testing the soil at different intervals going for, for the soil. They were the lowest of the two bids that we got back, and so this is the recommendation to go with them.
Thank you, Nate. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the, the motion to approve the agreement with G2 Consulting Group for the preliminary geotechnical investigation of 390 South Lafayette Street for a total amount of $4,325, under line item 101-440-801.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble. Do we have any further discussion?
I have something on that.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
Mr. Mack, I just want to let you know that those of us who have been involved in this piece of property for some time, because it's municipally owned now, we have to go through this, and I recognize that, and I, I think that's a very cheap price compared to what we've paid in the past, okay? Even though we all know what's down there, there's a lot of peat down there, okay, plus trash from when it was dumped on over 60 years ago. And I might add to your benefit that the grade of the peat that's down there is top grade in the world of peat. It might be to our advantage, since it's going to cost us 200 grand probably to excavate that, to get the solid dirt. We might be able to save a good deal of it for our own use in the future. That's, that's all I care to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any other further discussion? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Ultimately, I thought we were just trying to reveal what the circumstances of the soils were, not that we were going to be the ones to try to remediate in the event that there was issues there. It was simply to make sure that people that were investigating the purchase of that, that they knew what, what they had to address if they were going to build on there. Could you clarify that, Paul?
That's true. We're trying to find out the conditions of the soil to see what can possibly be done there. We don't know if the, if it can't actually hold a building or if it's just going to be, you know, for a potential parking lot or some, some other sort of perhaps entrance to the city. So we're trying to find out whatever we can before we decide to move forward or try to potentially market that property.
Okay. I mean, you can engineer anything, so that's not really an issue. It's whether they want to invest that much to do so. Thank you.
All right. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Move on to new business number two this evening. Purchase of a wellhouse structure for the offset pump at well site number six as outlined in a previous agenda to actually already place wellhouse at pump station four.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. How you guys doing? Pump for well number six is currently fenced in, and it has no structure to protect the pump. The previous quote from Jim's Amish structure included two structures in order to have number six well matched to the number four well site. We're now calling it number seven, the brand new well. This item can be purchased usually utilizing account 592-556-931, building and equipment maintenance, attached to the current prices from Jim's Amish structure for a match building to be delivered to McCady Park and claimed in two places, as per the first.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
First, I'd like to make a comment. I still have concerns with the wooden door that's on the existing structure. I was hoping we would end up modifying both these buildings with a steel door, just to make them much more secure, but with that said, I would like to make a motion that we, we approve the purchase of the and installation of the new pump house structure.
I'll second.
If you'd like, I could address, Mr. Kibble, the, the door situation is definitely on my radar as well. That is something I've had a company out, actually the foreman DPW spoken with somebody, and it's in the works. We're going to put a door there, and we're going to reuse the door that the Amish built for us as an interior door between the two buildings to get out falls or crisbees or anything that falls in between there.
Yeah, great. Yeah, well, I haven't had a moment to talk with you in a while, so I would have asked these direct, but this was the next best step, so thank you.
No problem.
Great, thank you, Doug. We have a motion by Councilmember Kibble, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. On to new business number three this evening. Purchase and installation of a 12-foot inch air cushion swing check valve for the recently discovered failed valve at the water treatment plant.
And so that brings us to a failed check valve at the water treatment plant. We need, recently, the department there discovered that we need to replace a check valve that was found to fail. This 12-inch check valve will allow the plant to pump the cycle in an automated mode. The water cannot be pumped properly without this valve working, as we're having some level issues, and this is what we isolated and found out to be the problem. This expenditure can be purchased out of the building maintenance account, 592.556.801, and the quotes for replacement are attached here with you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
First, I'd like to, to thank you, Doug, for providing the answers to the questions I had about this item as well as the, the previous one, and certainly didn't mean to disrupt your, your weekend with that email. I'll, I apologize, but I will try to make sure I get them out during the week, night on the weekend there going forward. With that said, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase and installation of a new check valve for the water treatment plant for $11,800 by Northern Pump and Well, under line item 592.556.801.
I'll support.
Is that you, Councilmember Walton?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. I can hear it sometimes. I can't tell who it is.
Oh, my apologies.
That's all right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton. Do we have any further discussion on it? All right, great. City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in another roll call vote?
Walton? Yes. Kurzweil?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to the budget this evening. Anyone have anything with the budget this evening? I do have one quick thing I did want to bring up. For several years, we've been trying to fall in line with our friends at the other end of the building to get the cameras swapped out in the council quarters. With the passing of the bond last week, you know, I don't know if we can reach out to them and see if that'll be, if that's going to work out now. Obviously, I know it is not nearly as urgent as it's been in the past because of the situation that we're all dealing with right now, but I would just like to reiterate that we are on borrowed time with that technology and finding things to replace it, and people who even know how to work on it is, is something that we just don't want to get to that point. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a, as a little reminder on that, because you just can't even find that stuff anymore. So that's all I had on the budget this evening. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Well, I was just thinking that in the event that they were agreeable, this would be the least disruptive time to be addressing that, too. So that'd be nice.
Absolutely, yes.
That was a good suggestion.
So, no, so does anyone else have anything on the budget this evening? Okay, great. We'll move on to the manager's report.
Wanted to first remind council regarding the zoning ordinance rewrite. We provided an updated copy for you. There were some pages that we found were not copied correctly within the last document, so we did get you all of you new copies to just replace that within your book. Remind everybody again regarding the census. It's extremely important to fill out that census. Every single dollar matters to our community, and every single person matters, and it multiplies over a 10-year period for the funds that we receive, not only for community development, block grant funds, but also Act 51 road funds, which will be extremely important moving forward when we look at our issues pertaining to our road. We did have a report last week regarding an increase in COVID cases. Those were reported by the Health Department. Have not have any other information other than the Health Department had reported higher numbers, and they were trying to attribute it to a couple of different things that may have occurred within the township. I did include for you a draft of what we're going to be using to do a request or proposal for the property at 318 West Lake Street that would solicit potential builders or developers on the particular property to build a home that is conducive and does fit into the neighborhood on Lake Street. Uh, the city attorney and I and the planner were working on that. We put together, together a, uh, development packet that will go uh, out and it will be, uh, on the website as well as we have signs prepared. They're gonna be on the site for people who wish to look at developing on that property. So expect to see that happening, uh, fairly, fairly quickly. Uh, the other item is I would be working on, uh, items pertaining to our capital improvement plan. One item specifically been working on was related to sidewalks and trailways and looking at way, potential ways to try to partner with the township on this also. They, um, are looking at doing some improvements for their potential sidewalks or paths or trailways within the community. We had discussed the potential for that safe routes to school, but we don't know if that would even potential go through or not. But it doesn't mean we still can't potentially make improvements to that intersection. Uh, you know, potentially, you know, having, uh, working relationship with them where we match benches, garbage cans, other sort of, um, partnerships that we could do with them, which we just found out worked out really well with the task force relating to the shop local and dine local. We think this is a, uh, good opportunity for us to, uh, work together again. Um, and that's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't know if this is for you, Paul, or Lisa. I just wondered, I know that we had, um, we had voted to let Oakland County count our absentee ballots and I just wondered how that went, if that was that you think we're gonna do again.
Hopefully be doing it again, but it did work out really well. They came and picked up all of our ballots, um, probably about five thirty the day before the election. We had two of our inspectors, um, at the county at six fifteen election morning and getting ready to start opening them and putting them through the machines. And apparently, I think Joe Rosell had said that they put through fifty thousand absentee ballots on election day.
Wow.
And they didn't have any issues. Our two inspectors I, that was there, I spoke with both of them and it seemed like it ran really well. Now, I have money in the budget to buy our own tabulators for an absentee county board, so it really depends if I'm gonna get enough workers to have an absentee county board. If not, we may end up having the county run them again in November.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Paul, I was wondering, has anybody reached out to any of the, the neighboring, uh, residents from three eighteen trying to get some kind of a, uh, impression of what their expectations are for whatever the property is? I thought that your, your pitch here was really very nicely done. I mean, everything is, is nice and tight so that we do manage the entirety of that project moving forward, so I thought that was really helpful. I just wondered if, if anybody had reached out to you or you had reached out to anybody to to get some feeling from some of the neighbors.
Yes, I had spoken to several of the neighbors, uh, immediately adjacent. One was concerned or wanted to actually purchase the property. Another one was concerned regarding development and wanted to ensure that we were going to try to solicit a, um, someone who would build a house that would be would look very well within the neighborhood, that would not be something that would be so far out that you couldn't tell it was, um, you know, part of down, part of, uh, the South Line or part of Lake Street. Uh, most others were just concerned and they, some of them may even consider wanting to build. I had one individual that was in town that was a builder that would consider, uh, submitting a proposal. But everybody was really happy that we're moving forward. They're happy to see that building down and they're very excited about seeing another residence in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's my, been my impression from talking with them as well. So I just was hoping that you had spoken to some of them. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Richards.
Uh, Paul, regarding three eighteen. Um, what if, uh, uh, a prospective bidder wants to buy the property and, uh, build a house according to how we want it? But his intention is to move into it and live in it himself or bring in some of his family, say his mother or mother-in-law or something, bring him into town. Uh, it was not the, that wouldn't be the same situation as, uh, putting it on the market for resale to see what it would bring. Uh, has any consideration been done for that?
Well, we would definitely consider that. The main focus is to get a home that is similar to the neighborhood. And when we put together the bid process, there's several items that we're looking at, not only the potential price, but also the house, whether they've done something like this before, what's your timeframe for completing uh, a home like that, but it doesn't mean that somebody can't do something like just how you described. You know, whether it's a family member, you know, they, as long as it's written and we've discussed, I've had discussions with this with the attorney regarding within the development agreement that does say that they are finishing the house and they are gonna complete it, they could sell it, build, use it for their own purpose, wherever it may be.
It's been done before in this town. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kibble, you had something?
Actually, I think that if somebody was going to build it and they wanted to live there, they've got more skin in the game. They're likely to end up making it even that much more special, so I think that that would be a benefit.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for the manager's report this evening? Okay, great. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Um, we might be a little light tonight in, uh, regards to, uh, people watching with the other meeting going on in town.
Nobody's raising their hand at the moment.
At this time, we'll close the public comment and we'll move on to council comments. Um, Councilmember Richards, why don't you start us off tonight?
Okay, I really only have one thing I wanted to mention, uh, that hasn't come up before. Uh, uh, just today, I saw our new contractor into town here. Uh, Pipe Tech, okay, the ones we've, uh, awarded to some months ago and, uh, starting in on their project. So I stopped on the bicycle and talked to them. Okay, and, uh, asked them if they have cameras and such, that they're going through some of the lines and, and, uh, and they said they did and, uh, they were very friendly. And I just informed them of some of the overall major problems that, uh, we've had with drainage over the years that have never been completely resolved and, uh, told them to be on the lookout for these different spots in town. Uh, anyway, that, that's all I really had for tonight, really. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Dill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few things. I wanted to say thank you to Josie and Joe for their work on the cultural commission and wanted to say welcome and thank you to Dana Johnston. I can't imagine a more perfect, uh, fit and a very fortunate addition for, uh, for South Lion. So welcome to her. Uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Lisa Deaton and the office staff for all their work during the election. Uh, I can't even imagine how, uh, difficult this was with the increased absentee ballots with the, um, ballots that didn't show up at people's houses. We had that same, uh, issue happen here. Um, the friendliness of the office staff when people went in. I've heard nothing but good comments from residents on how easy it was to spoil their ballot or to, uh, figure out what they needed to do. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Um, I wanted to commend the participation in the school demonstration today. Um, I, I actually just can't imagine what it's like to be a parent of a school-aged child right now. Um, I just, it's hard enough to send my kids to college. I can't imagine what it's like right now. And I know there's a lot of frustration, a lot of ideas, so I just really appreciate the positiveness uh, to speak their mind and thank the, uh, police. I saw the chief there and, uh, I just wanted to say thank you for that. And on that same note, I wanted to give a shout out of support to our school board members who are in the middle of a very difficult meeting right now uh, with a seemingly impossible decision. I listened just before I came on the call. There was over seventy, um, emails they were reading through. Um, and I just wanted to say, um, I real, I, you know, I, I really support them and my heart goes out to them because this is a really, really difficult time for the whole community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Those were great comments this evening. Uh, Councilmember Kurzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also, uh, had an opportunity to speak with, uh, Josie and Joe and thank them personally for all the time that they have, have spent on the Culture Arts Commission. And I wanted to thank, uh, uh, the city for moving quickly with uh, Dana's application because the Art Commission does need a quorum in order to, uh, continue doing business and I believe now they have it. So, uh, thank you very much for moving quickly on that. Uh, I also want, I also had friends that, uh, attended, uh, this afternoon, uh, the event uh, regarding Voices for Choices and I think that's what speaks, uh, the best about the, the country that we live in is that we live in a country that we have the freedom to make choices, uh, where, where we want to send our children to school, how we want to have our children educated. Uh, I think what, uh, frustrates parents, quite frankly, is that you have two different ideologies working in, um, the sphere about, about education. And, and I think the parents that want a choice, I think their voice is just as important and should be heard by, uh, the board, uh, the school board and by the new superintendent is that freedom is about choices and I think people respond better when they have choices that they can uh, rely on or, or work towards. We're not always gonna find common ground. Uh, I know I don't always find common ground, but when I'm given a choice, I can, I can reason through things and, and things usually end up okay. Last, I want to thank everyone who is responsibly and carefully cautiously learning to live with COVID nineteen. And that's what we have to do. It's not going away anytime soon, but we have to learn to live with it. We have to learn to manage our life, manage our social, uh, contacts, continue to wash our hands, uh, a mask to me is freedom. I would not be able to go to half the places I go unless I had a mask on and to me, that mask is freedom. So please, uh, don't blow it off, uh, take it seriously. We'll get through it. You know, uh, we're almost into September and I can remember the dark days of February and March, so time is moving on. So good night, everybody. Stay safe. God bless and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurzweil. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, uh, keep my comments, uh, pretty brief tonight because I, I don't really have a whole lot to say other than I wanted to thank Josie and Joe as well. They have done some amazing things in our city with the Ultra, um, Cultural Arts and they will definitely be missed. I hope that maybe someday things will change and they might come back to us. Um, and Dana is gonna be a, a great asset on that board and I look forward to seeing what they have coming up for us. So that's all I have for tonight. Y'all have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, uh, want to emphasize what the, uh, city manager mentioned previously is that, uh, just to remind everyone to complete their census questionnaire. The deadline for being counted is September thirtieth. So please go to twenty twenty census dot gov and complete it today. And also please check with your neighbors and friends to remind them to do it as well. Time is running out to be counted. The amount of money that is allocated in the city based on the census will be even more critical for the next ten years considering the current economic conditions and situation. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Kibble?
Uh, sort of piggyback on that, if my, uh, the numbers that I had seen were still eighteen percent have not submitted their information to the census. Uh, that equates, I think, Paul, didn't, didn't you say something about, uh, seventy-five bucks, uh, a year or something like that per head for, for Act fifty-one monies?
That's correct. Seventy-five dollars per person, not per household, but per person.
Exactly. So, I mean, eighteen percent, we're at twelve thousand. I mean, that's a, a significant number of people can still step up to the plate and help us to be able to address some of our, our road issues. Uh, I was, I had heard that there's a, an amplified effort for managing the vegetation, trees and shrubs and things like that over some of the sidewalks and bike trails and even, uh, going as far as low branches out into roadways and things. Uh, I, I'm delighted by that. I've been really animated to get in, uh, you know, to keep harping on it. And I don't want to seem like a, you know, a loudmouth or anything, but when you're riding your bike and you get whipped by branches because you can't bend over far enough to be able to get out from under them, um, that's, that's inappropriate. So I was hoping like crazy that we could step up those efforts. I know that, uh, Mike has the code enforcement officer has been very active and he's really taken care of an awful lot of some of the shortcomings that had gone unnoticed before. So, I mean, I don't know if it's something we, we give the homeowner an opportunity if it's a niessment tree because some people are fussy about grooming their trees. Chances are if it's overgrown, maybe they're not so fussy, so they might not mind if we were to attend some of that stuff, but, uh, I'd like to at least give them an opportunity to step up to the plate and, and fix some of that stuff. And I don't want us to be Nazis about it, but I think that it's important that we, we do what we can, that, you know, when you see shrubs that are cheating their way out into the bike path and all of a sudden our eight or ten foot bike path is six, seven, nine feet wide, you know, that makes a difference when you're, you've got traffic going both ways, so. Um, oh, I guess that's enough of that. I just thought I'd bring that forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, um, Mike does an incredible job. That is a thankless job and so thank you to Mike and his continued great work here, absolutely.
He's really good at it and not being offensive with people, so that's really helpful, yeah.
No, it's, it's a tough line to walk, so.
Trying to get compliance, not be a bully, yeah.
Uh, I just got a couple of things I have to repeat too because, uh, Josie and Joe um, just all-stars, uh, on the, on the Cultural Arts Commission. They will be missed and, and like, uh, I believe it was maybe Councilmember Walton said, you know, maybe down the road and, and some things changed, uh, that we could get them back down the road because they are an incredible asset to that group. Uh, with that being said, um, I mean, if you gotta go to the bullpen, it's Dana Johnston, so that's fantastic. You know, I don't know how many hats that woman has on, but she, uh, loves this community. Um, and I know she will be a good fit there, so we welcome her aboard. Um, I also definitely want to thank our poll workers last week. Um, I tried to pop in and not be a hassle to say hello and, and encourage everyone for what I know is a long day. I didn't get to see everybody because I didn't want to encroach on, uh, some of the lines, um, in, in respect to everyone's social distancing, but thank you uh, to those that I didn't get to see and, uh, you know, that's a incredibly large part of our democratic process and, and can sometimes be forgotten by our friends here in the community. They do a great job and thank you to Lisa and everyone here that helps manage that. Um, just another quick reminder, uh, the flags are up in, in our, our work with the township in the city. It looks great. It's a nice reminder. Um, I mean, as soon as you come into Lion Township, there's no missing those flags. Uh, so, you know, it's, it's a great reminder to try and keep your, your, your hard-earned dollars in our community and, and whether that's, you know, we right here in downtown in the city, but in our friends at all, all of the surrounding townships, you know, we're all, we're all close here. We all go to a lot of the same schools and so, um, you know, just another reminder to try and, try and support local before we're jumping on Amazon if we can. Um, with that, we are actually not gonna be looking for a motion to adjourn tonight as we will be, uh, entertaining a motion to go into closed session. Um, I don't know if the city attorney would like to help me on, on taking the lead here. We just need a motion to go into closed session. Um, any guidance is great.
Yeah, I would actually read what's written on the agenda because you have to explain why you're going into closed session and that's sufficiently worded.
Thank you. Uh, closed session pursuant to section eight E of the Opens Meetings, Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen dot six eight C to discuss strategy and negotiations for a collective bargaining agreement between the city of South Lion and the police unions POAM and POLC and the AFSCME union. Councilmember Kennedy?
I'll make the motion to, uh, to go in closed session pursuant to section eight, uh, eight E, eight C, my apologies, of the, uh, Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two sixty-eight C to discuss strategy and negotiations for a collective bargaining, uh, agreement between the city of South Lion and the police unions POAM and POLC and the ASME union.
I'll support.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk Deaton, uh, would you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Calchett?
Yes. And really quick, before we go into the closed session, um, I did want to remind anyone that is watching, um, that we may come out of this, there may be action taken after this, um, and we will Yes. And really quick, before we go into the closed session, I did want to remind anyone that is watching that we may come out of this, there may be action taken after this, and we will have the recording back on at that time. City Clerk Deaton, it looks like the recording has come back on.
Yes, I just turned it back on.
So, Mr. Mayor, we have the union contracts before you this evening. We have the contracts for the POAM Police Union, the POLC Union, and the AFSCME Union. We have attached copies of those union contracts for you, and the possible courses of action are to approve or not approve the POA Union contract July first, two thousand twenty, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, the POLC Union contract from July first, two thousand twenty, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, and the last one is the AFSCME Union contract for July first, two thousand twenty, to two thousand twenty-four. I recommend that there would be separate motions for each one of those union contract approvals.
Thank you, city managers and all. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the POAM Union contract July first, twenty twenty, through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll support.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
I'm going to go now.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the POLC Union contract July one twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
One second.
Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you again please lead us in a roll call vote?
Walton?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
No.
Dill?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Kennedy, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the AFSCME Union contract July first, twenty twenty, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll support.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Clerk Deaton, could you again lead us in one final roll call vote this evening?
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kurzweil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, have a great one.
Bye.
Thank you.
See you, guys.